Yeah.
One third.
Yeah.
I can't. And then I go, oh.
I'm serious.
Do it. He gets on. Yeah, yeah. She couldn't do this on first. Right? What did they start with? In other words. To help you. Officially. Personally. That is, go down a little bit.
Yeah, how you doing, brother?
Next workout.
Yeah, I'm ready to roll.
Every word. Then after, that's what it is. They said we're gonna have a boost. Finally she got a. Which is forty-five. Her name is Jess. Now she just need a water.
And just fill her strength.
Better. It works, the program works. It would work for you.
I need to.
I mean, how would you like? Are you? Rob? I got news for you.
I know, he's telling me nothing.
How do you?
You're independent.
What are you, what are you getting? How fast?
Why are, why are we screwing around? Uh, yeah.
I've never had a.
My old boss said, do something, even if it's wrong, do something.
Oh, man. The day. I've never had a broken bone. I've had five broken ribs. And a puncture lung. Out of, out of bones.
I mean, I've had.
The thing that pisses me off, man, is.
I've had.
The mold is coming back. Through the crack in the floor now. I'm not a moldologist. But moldology, mold, mold is usually created from. After moisture. Well, it is today. But hey, it's a real thing. But, you know, it doesn't, if they put a bridge back in it. From the, from the floor.
Perfect.
It should be. That's supposed to be laughing. If, if.
No.
If it did, I.
I know how much.
Why is the mold? If they didn't do something.
We are.
Yeah.
All stop. Some don't.
Yeah.
Exercise good.
Did they, did they put the white faceboard? Do you? Huh?
With a plan behind it.
To do this.
Well, it's nice.
Getting up. Of lifting. Of taking.
We have taken more money and thrown after. Those, those, good money and bad money. That's just, uh, nah. We'll all get thrown out here.
Straight forward. Simple.
So, eat spots, gotta.
Lots of them.
And then, put your foot down.
This might over hit.
And move it.
Taking it.
Or something.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's.
Really?
Five times.
I was watching. Dwayne. Dwayne. Uh, Congressman. Where is he?
You know, that's. I.
That's why I like calls, please. I, I mean, I'm sorry, not calls, it's a slam.
Thank you, sir.
My, this is my husband.
I'm the same way. I'm right. I am too. That's a good thing.
Oh, no, it looks like a school mark.
My dog gets me up.
Yeah. My dog goes, the nose.
Oh, yeah, he blows his head up on the bed. Oh, God, no, please, no. Oh.
He must, he must live a miserable life. Guy talking. Have you ever seen anything? That's.
Yeah.
Ever? I've, I've. Where's?
Really? The horn?
From any wood? Every. Every time I look, the words I speak into this microphone.
You, you satisfied with the progress?
Terribly.
Yeah.
There's, there is.
Oh, there was.
Just, just give it up. This one's loud.
Is he? How's, how's he feeling about? Fire station. No, I might not be here.
Work in the room.
Yeah.
You can tell it's electric.
He's giving out brush. Here's my door hanger.
Hey, Elisa. Elisa. You need to hear. If I get replaced? I don't want her to, I'm all.
Hey, got it.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, it's time for prayer, let's go. Jeff! Time for prayer, let's go. Go knock on their doors later.
Bill, you're letting people interrupt the prayer, man.
All right. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please make sure your phones are turned to off. And if you'll stand up and join me in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Let us use your knowledge, your will, to work together to come to good solutions for everybody involved. Please, uh, bless those in Jamaica that are being hit by the hurricane right now. Help them through it. I know it's gonna be a dire situation for them, but please give them all the comfort you can. Thank you so much for our first responders that are with us here and out in the field. That's today's first responders day, so please, we appreciate you blessing us with them. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, ever deep.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Um, the first section, of course, is public comment, and there's no one signed up for a public comment. So, we'll move right along from that to ado- adoption of agenda and consent items. Uh, is there a motion on the adoption of that?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to add to the agenda, um, discussions about repairing the, uh, welcome center.
You'd like to add the welcome center?
What's that?
You, I couldn't hear what you said.
Yeah, talk about the repair of the, uh, visitor center.
Okay. So you wanted to add that to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, okay. All right, all in favor of that?
All right.
So we'll move, we'll, that passes, so we'll move that on to the agenda. Um, appointments and recognitions, we'll move right into next, which will be re- recognition of the Swansboro High School student to student team. And if I could get you guys to come up over to the podium over here, I would appreciate it. Hey, we don't have any public hearing tonight, so we'll just move straight to the beautification committee proposal follow-up discussion. And John, were you gonna say a few words on that?
Um, Mayor, Board, this, this item was brought to your attention back at the August twenty-sixth. A board meeting where the committee originally approached you with the idea of creating a, some sort of beautification committee. Um, during that meeting, uh, they made their presentation, gave you some, um, guidelines, maybe what they were thinking about, some bylaws, what their purpose would be, uh, how they go about functioning as, as a committee. And the, uh, town attorney provided you some guidance on what options the board would have as far as creating an advisory committee, what the law says, what you could do to create, um, an independent commission, whether you could or could not do that at all, or just have them, uh, leave them alone as be a private nonprofit entity. So you had a couple of options, um, at your, at, at your disposal. Um, and each one carries some different rules or parameters, particularly as if you created, uh, a committee or a co- a commission, like we've had with some other committees here in town, that we have to abide by certain general statutes as far as, uh, record keeping, open meeting laws, um, if there's any fi- uh, funds involved, how those funds are, if they're raised, how they have to be, um, properly accounted for through, uh, the, the town, um, uh, financials. So you have your options. We did meet with, um, the committee, October the eighth, we, we met here at Town Hall. We, we, again, talked about those options and some, uh, maybe some other options that they might have as, you know, as far as if they were a, the, the one that we really did talk about at, at the August board meeting was, um, them, their desire, if, that if they created a, uh, five-one-C-three, a nonprofit, but they, again, I think they were concerned about the time and the money and the expense it would take to, you know, create that, that, that type of, uh, organization. Uh, I, I mentioned to them, you know, there are some other options weighted around that, there's, you know, I think one good, uh, example would be the, um, Military Affairs Committee. They, they partnered with the Chamber, who's already an established, uh, nonprofit, so they don't have to go through that, but they're just a subcommittee of that. I mentioned that to them, that they, you know, the partnership with the, the Chamber or, uh, Swansboro Source, something like that, that's already has sort of those ideas in mind of beautifying, uh, Swansboro, maybe they could, uh, uh, their, their committee could be used to enhance what those nonprofits are already trying to do for Swansboro. So that's where we are tonight. I, I think we're just gonna, you know, with, their idea was to see what the board's feel was as far as pursuing any, what, what option was, uh, preferred. Um, if we, depending on which way, you know, you desire to go, you know, I think the next step would be, okay, depending on what you do, is how we set up the structure of whatever it is that we, we do create, you know, and kind of more define what their roles are, what our roles are.
Okay. All right, thank you, John. I'd like to open up, is there any discussion or any, yep, okay.
Yeah, um, I recommend, we can, them as an advisory committee, much like our advisory committees we have, um, with some caveats, and I've explained this, I think, to the chair as well in another conversation, is that we will not dedicate any other further staff, other than the city clerk, for your minutes. Okay, because I'm not here to grow government for more, more burden on the staff. That's kind of like my constraint for you, or, or my, my caveat, or my contingency, I guess. Um, and that kind of falls in with, you know, small governance is the best governance. And the less impact you guys have on our staff, the more you're out there doing your own research and chasing down things like contracts, offers, projects and ideas, the less burden you put on them, the better off this is gonna work out. And the same goes for the city manager. Work, he's your friend, you know? We're gonna be the decision makers, but that's your best friend over there, believe it or not, so you need to treat him like that. Okay? Um, any questions for you guys for the board, or any other questions the board might have on this? But that's, uh, my recommendation. So I'm gonna move, once the discussions are over, that we adopt them and bring them into our committees.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Joe, or Camera, Jeff, or Pat, any discussion or anything you'd like to add? So he, he, we're gonna have discussion, but he's already moved to, um, establish a committee. It was hard, it's hard, this audio is kind of hard to hear, but it, that, yeah.
I'm, I'm, after my comments and discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt them as an advisory committee. Under the caveat that they don't require, they don't tap into the staff for doing their work. In other words, we're not gonna commit the staff to doing their administrative work or anything else like that, other than the city clerk will sit in on their meetings and take the minutes. And they were happy with that, from my discussions I had with some of the board members. So they won't be making much of an impact to our already busy staff. Um, other than the city clerk, it's gonna fall on Elisa, of course, it's a big job, though, so. I think she can handle it. Um, and I haven't seen any pushback, or I'd like to hear what you have to say about it.
Currently, I have mixed emotions on it. I think these things are real loud today. Can you guys understand us at all? Okay. I have mixed emotions on it, and I agree with you, that we can't have the staff to have extra work. Um, except for maybe taking minutes. Um, I'm not sure how much time staff would have to participate. I do like the idea of the beautification committee. I think it's needed in Swansboro. I'd like to see it happen, just not sure yet which way I wanna go with it, whether it's a committee, an advisory committee, or not. Now, our current advisory committees, you know, the board selects the people who are on the committees. So I'm not sure that does, isn't gonna be the same if you become an advisory committee, just like the others, that the board approves the selections of the people on the committee. So I'm not sure if you folks have talked about that or not, um, but that is one of the things.
One of my, really, my biggest and only concern reva- uh, is around the historic commission. Everything downtown in the historic district, commission is responsible for. So, it would appear that, just saying they wanna do, but I heard something possibly about lights and the flagpole thing, not actually a flagpole, but some type of a different lighting down there. Um, that would have to go through the historic commission first, for anything, for them to approve it. I'm getting a yes from. I'm just worried about some type of conflict. But ultimately, the historic commission.
Uh, uh, yeah, you can't, well, you can't talk right this second.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that's, that's my concern. I, I don't want historic commission to have their toes stepped on, so to speak. I know it's a, a term, but, you know, everything has to, have to go through them, basically, if it had anything to do with disrupting, changing what's required.
Joe, you had something?
Jeff, one thing I would, uh, I would point out, that I, I know three of the members, or that, the proposed members, they live in historic, uh, districts, so I don't think they would do anything that would, uh, damage that or offset that, not knowingly. Uh, I'm more in line with Pat on this, uh, on, you know, the, the idea that you're gonna do this without taxing the s- staff. You know, you know, I know we spoke, uh, in a, in another setting before, and I thought, yeah, you know, uh, that would be, I think, a beautification committee is, is warranted, but I just don't know how you're gonna do it without hitting the staff. Uh, and I think we, when we can sort that out, I would, I would probably go for it. Right now, tonight, I'm, I'm a little shy on it.
Camera, you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, so, um, really, you're not supposed to, but you can come up and say something if you'd like, then I'll make final comments.
Go.
Huh? What?
Yeah, I.
Hold on, Cynthia, hold on.
So, last meet, the last time, um, the committee came, we asked what other towns are doing. I haven't heard anything about this. You have that? Okay.
That, that's why I was saying that they had something, yep.
Okay. Come on, I'll go ahead and start with this, and that's included in here.
Yeah, yeah, how long, I mean, how long do you think this will be?
Five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Greetings. Thank you to the board for hearing us this evening. Um, we wanted to share that after independent research, meeting with the town staff and mayor, and meeting as a non-official committee, we reached a unanimous decision to request a vote from the board to create an official town advisory committee, named Appearance Committee, per state statute one-six-zero-D-dash-three-oh-four. We have reviewed the statute fully, and are prepared to work within the parameters of it to include five regular members, two and two alternate members. We would like to share with you some of the main factors that we discussed that led us to reach our decision. We prefer and welcome open meetings, which provide transparency and include town and citizen involvement. We determine that the town and state's stipulations and guidelines offer us more opportunity and possibility than any other way of forming for this specific endeavor. The town's handling of any money is preferred by us, and this would provide full transparency and responsibility to the town. We feel that this formation will allow for more opportunities for grants, and a greater chance of being chosen to receive grant money. We feel that this formation better positions us for collaborative efforts with the other town board and committees, with the town board and committees. It will create more opportunities for sponsorships and donations from organe- organizations, individuals and businesses. There would also be increased collaboration and ideas for us with other towns, such as a few towns that we have tapped into for ideas, and they have appearance committees. And by the way, appearance committees in towns across the state are not uncommon, not uncommon at all, especially in historic towns. Um, and those would be the towns of Windell and Sanford. They follow the state statute, and they have appearance committees as well. And if you go to these two towns, you see some really amazing things. I was in Sanford on Saturday. A lot of the things that we have envisioned for our town. Um, Doug would like to share a few, a few words.
Yeah, and I think the main points I would like to make is, is to reiterate what, uh, Jeff was saying, is that, out of respect of the, for the town staff, we've agreed that we would have our meetings dur- during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, no evenings or anything like that. And second, and, secondly, we do also recognize that the board of commissioners have discretion as to who would be on the commission. We would hope, though, that our efforts to put this together would put us in a good light in order to be on the commission, uh, and, uh, you know, th- it would still, with the four of us, it would still leave the board of commissioners, uh, three seats that they could fill at their discretion. So it would not be just us. Um, lastly, uh, we would like to work collaboratively with the Historic Association, uh, with tourism, um, you know, with the, uh, town staff, and be really just, um, hands and feet on the street, trying to get some of these things done, and to find funds, uh, do fundraising and things of that sort. So, that's it.
And it was requested by the commissioners that we provide some examples of the work that we made, should we become an official town advisory committee. While we have so far greatly focused our volunteer efforts on becoming a committee, um, and not so much the appearance enhancements just yet, but, uh, some ideas that have been mentioned are as follows. Decorative, street lighting, enhanced flag display, flower pots, decorative trash cans, enhancements to town welcome sign areas and corridor, and, and much more. We are motivated and enthusiastic to get to work if, if we should be voted in. Thank you.
So we would like to share again that it would be our dedication and motivation to operate and execute our approved projects and plans with grant money, sponsorships, and local individuals, clubs, organizations and businesses. our approved projects and plans with grant money, sponsorships, and local individuals, clubs, organizations, and businesses. We have also discussed creative solutions that would require no commitment from the town budget for maintaining and updating certain things, such as flower pots, et cetera. We've already felt a lot of excitement, um, and are looking forward to bringing the amazing enhancements, opportunities to our special town, the friendly city by the sea. And we're now open the floor for any questions you may have for us.
Yeah, this, this question probably is much for Raz as it is for, uh, for anybody. Y'all had your eyes on some, some grant money. I'm, I'm assuming, I keep hearing that word. What is the requirements, Raz, for if they're a committee ordained, if you will, or organized under our charter, if they have grant money, uh, or the, uh, the control of that money, the accounting, et cetera, et cetera?
Ms. Brown, as a committee or commission of the, the town of Swansboro, the Appearance Commission would not independently control a source of funds. They would have to be a separate account set up within the town's, uh, accounts, uh, and carried through the town's books. But, uh, they could, of course, apply for the, for grant monies, but not operate independently of the town as, as a body to actually receive funds and spend those funds out of their own accounts. It would have to be.
Well, basically, it would be managed by Sonya.
Correct. Be managed through the finance department of the town.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess that's all the questions. I would just like to comment, it's going to take a whole lot of coordination and a whole lot of cooperation if this is, um, if this is approved. I, I, I think there's a need for beautification around town. Not that we have an ugly town, but I would like to see it focus on the whole town if it was a committee, not, I mean, you start, no, oh, um, if you would start with maybe a certain area, but gravitate out from there. And it would take a lot of coordination. We'd have to operate with the talent bank to get the remaining members of the committee, uh, to be approved, but they'd have to submit, uh, an application. Uh, you'd have to do open meeting rules, as y'all already know about that, and, uh, it's not that nobody doesn't want it, it's just, it's just a matter of coordination and it being as seamless as possible, and, and cooperating with other entities. Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like that we have made those points. There are things on the corridor that we've mentioned here tonight. Um, but we don't want to get too far into this without being official committee, because then it's just a waste of volunteer time just thinking what we could do and not being able to execute. And, you know, I think, I feel like we have, if we were on the committee, we have very bright people here with great ideas, and motivation, so I don't think we'd have any problems. And again, these Appearance Committees across the state for towns our size are very common, and they've done great things in their towns. Um, I don't see any reason we could not do that here.
Okay. All right, so that being said, Doug, you had a motion on the table to approve the committee? Okay, is there a second from anyone?
I'll second it.
Second from Pat? Uh, yes, yes, sir, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, that microphone does not want to work.
We do have to create a by ordinance. That ordinance, it'll define powers and roles and authorities in that ordinance, so we will need to draft that and bring it back. You can, you can create the commission, approve, and direct us to create the ordinance and bring it back to you to adopt to make it.
Okay, so, so we would have to, if we approve it, we'd have to come back, and y'all would give us directives as to the, the parameters and the organization according to our ordinances, our town ordinances? Yeah, and, and I agree with that. It's, that's my biggest concern, is if, if we had, um, some kind of conflict of interest, not interest, but conflict between two different entities or something. Okay, last, last comment, and then we'll go ahead. We've got a motion and a second, so.
Thank you.
We're kind of, kind of, kind of in a different mood.
I know. I just want to say one thing on that. So anything that we do as an official committee would have to be approved by the board and, and go through you all. So there's nothing that we could do that's going to affect another committee negatively, and we would be able to catch that before any of that would, were to happen. Thank you.
That makes sense. All right, so we have a motion and a second, uh, so I'd like to get a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So it's unanimous. So congratulations on the committee. And I would like to interject that with that being said, I'll be glad to help any way I can with the town staff. If I need to attend meetings or whatever to help with the town staff at all, I'd be more than happy to do what I can do to help facilitate. Okay, um, so Sonya, I guess you're up next. Well, so we, we want to, we added the visitor center. Did we want to do that after the financial or before? Be after, I would think, but I'm not sure.
Good evening.
Ooh.
Mayor and Commissioners. All right. So I am presenting your September, um, as of September 2030, 2025 financial report. So here is our two-year comparison of our general fund and total deficit of revenues over expenditures were $62,632. Just a reminder, as I stated before, the bulk of the town's abhorrent tax revenues are not collected until November, December timeframe, so with that said, um, you'll see, most likely see a deficit until that triggers in.
Do, do we anticipate that that'll be very similar to last year? I, I would guess maybe a little more.
Yeah, it always, yeah.
Yeah, a little higher.
Will be higher, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then here is your two-year comparison of your actual, this is without encumbrances, and your total excess of revenues over expenditures were $12,428. And here's a summary of expenditures by department, and overall, the total expenditures are at 21.14% of budget, which is 3.86% less than the monthly projected of 25%. And as you can see, there's, um, non-departmental that is a little over the 25%, and that's just due to your annual property and liability insurance and workers' comp. We pay annually instead of monthly. And then the downtown facilities, um, if you recall, we did a budget amendment, the first budget amendment for the church, the church street dock repairs. So that's why that's over the 25%. And your mullet fest, your, your festival and events, and that's due to mullet, but obviously, that's going to fix itself because we didn't have the mullet, so. Um, this is your Stormwater Enterprise Fund with encumbrances, and your total excess of revenues over expenditures were $98,287. As you, as I stated before, you're, um, we build for the stormwater, so, um, and as, as of today, I looked at it this morning, I think we collected like $134,000, so we're right on target. And this Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, and your total excess of revenues over expenditures were $6,924. And here is your summary of town, town debt and current loan balances. And this is a summary of your town ca, current cash and investment accounts and their current balances. As you can see, your, the TD Bank, the interest rate's going down, so just wanted to point that out. And then here's a summary of your current grant projects and their balances. Any questions?
Okay, anybody have any questions for Sonya?
No, but I got a comment. Sonya, I like the way you do it, because you tell us exactly what those numbers mean and why they're lagging in some places, and I love that you provide the amplify, amplify information, so when the questions come up, I don't have one.
They taught that in our financial management. Don't let them have to ask you, you just tell them.
Good evening. This mic, this microphone definitely works. Um, so next month in November, you will only have one meeting due to the Veterans Holiday falling on the regularly scheduled meeting date. For that meeting, we did have visitor center discussion planned, so I guess depending on the discussion tonight will determine if that'll be arriving again in November. There will be an addition to that agenda for a recognition of Engineer Stalin, who received the Tunnel to Towers, um, footsteps award, which he was not available to receive it at Tunnel to Towers, so we'll be providing it to him at that meeting. Um, for your upcoming December meetings, the ninth will be your organizational meeting, where votes will be given to those elected on Tuesday of next week, um, as well as several seats specified for mayor pro tem, um, and then the Anwasa Board if necessary, as well as adopting the schedule for the next year. Currently, for the December 23rd meeting, the only thing scheduled for that is the monthly financial report. Are there any other agenda items the board would like to see addressed in the next coming meetings?
Should we have maybe an update of all, I don't know how appropriate this, I'm just asking, of all the committees that we have and the status of where they're at with things like our pool committee and, you know, just, you know, TDA, whatever the case may be. I mean, is that appropriate, or just like, so to refresh our memories, what's going on with all the committees?
You could have those committees come and present.
And then I was thinking, do we need to give some kind of presentation for a San Bland Award to make people aware of the upcoming award?
I'm sorry, that, that is also going to be on the December 9th. I did not mention that. That, that is the meeting where the San Bland Award would be given.
It'll be on the 9th?
It'll be on the 9th.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, and in November, you will be choosing the recipient of that award and close session. Um, at your November meeting, um, and those applications close Friday. If anybody would like to submit any applications for San Bland, they do close Friday. But for the boards that you would like updates on, you can invite your boards to provide you with updates at future meetings.
I just, I just think it would be nice. I mean, we've got several committees out there. We've got the old EOC committee, you know, we've got the pool committee, we've got all kinds of committees, so. It'd be nice to see where the status are on those.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything that like future agenda? All right. So that concludes that. Now, we've got items moved from consent, but before we go to that, I guess we do the visitor center? Yep. All right, Jeff, you, uh, who brought that up? Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, go ahead and start us out, Jeff.
The, um, I, I, we got the holidays coming up, and I would like to see us start the repairs of putting the restroom back in place at the visitor center. Yeah, there are possibly other things, but I don't see, there's no reason why we can't start putting a bathroom together as far as toilet, urinals, sink, um, paper towel dispenser, whatever. We need to have something, uh, moving down there at the visitor center. So I would like to direct the staff that we could have them start taking that on to get that stuff put in there.
So, so Jeff is suggesting that we go ahead and start facilitating, getting the restrooms in the visitor center, and should, I guess Doug's question is, should we wait until we get, okay?
From what I understand, we, we have equipment in storage, in the, in the form of plumbing fittings, like sinks and toilets, right? That's, I, I have heard this before.
We, we do have all the equipment, the shower stalls, the toilets, the urinals.
Yeah.
Washer and dryer to create the transient boiler facility. And I think it's going to take just as much effort to put toilets and urinals in as it would be to washer and dryer hookup.
Okay.
And, and two shower stalls. So the question is, is that the direction we want to go with it, or, or not, but?
I don't, I don't know.
That facility together. There, there's another piece to this, and that is the agreement with the future of the church street.
I, I got that.
And, and that's really what's driving the, the whole thing.
Let me, let me finish, though. I think the question that Jeff wants, and I want to, and most people here, is capability as far as before shopping night, I would have scammed, but shopping by candlelight happened, and, uh, the flotilla coming up this Christmas, um, in December. Cap, capability means to me the ability to, the crowd to relieve themselves without having to use the restaurants, facilities, or the limited restaurant facilities, and non-customers coming in and using their facilities, tying up customers. I think that's probably the concern. Okay, could this be answered by six porta potties down there in the parking lot, uh, behind the visitor center for those events? Because I know the last time you had like two.
Right now, we have, just have two.
And, you know, can we increase that to six?
But for, for events, yes, we're going to bring in more. Um, I don't, even for events, the, the, when we had bathrooms in the visitor center, we still brought in.
Yeah.
Uh, extra port, porta potties.
Because I think the overall thing is doing it right versus rushing it. You know what I mean? Like, let's do it right once, and then have to do it twice. You see where I'm going with this? Uh, Jeff, are you looking for just capability for people to be, in, like, not being inconvenienced during the, the celebrations we're about to have this winter? Because it really comes down to, I think, getting that visitor center up and functional, I'm looking at, at a good deadline before the next season starts, like Memorial Day. I think that's reasonable, considering what all the questions we had, what was going on down there, and all the things we've done as far as contractors coming in and assessing the mold issue and all these other kind of things. Now, we just got to get a clear path to, okay, why don't we do this once, and we're done with it? Instead of, I don't want to reinforce something that we might have to.
Yeah, my, my concern is, is not necessarily, obviously, that small bathroom is not going to make a dent when we have something, a festival, because you're only talking to them. But my main concern really is for the everyday thing, uh, more so than when we have events, like today, uh, type of thing, somebody needs to go restroom, they're bouncing around trying to find something to go. Or they at least have that.
What's your thoughts on, would you want just to do the toilets or the showers and dryers and everything, or?
Well, you know, I think at this point, with, with everything that's going on, we have, we might as well do it like we're saying. Dryers, would, just make it happen?
Well, I really don't think that the amount of time, you know, there's some, you know, we removed, removed a lot of drywall, some flooring. It's still going to have to be done whether we do just bathrooms or showers, a little, the amount of time and effort is really not, is going to be inconsequential. There might be a little more expense for a contractor to install shower stalls and washer dryer hookup versus just putting in urinals and toilets, but the amount of time it's going to take, but, as Mr. Beckendorf said, I think, do it, do it once, if you're, whatever direction you go, let's just do it one time, and not have to go back in and say, oh, I wish we had done shower stalls. Yeah, that's going to be a lot more expensive to go back in after we've drywalled and trimmed and painted, and that, that would be a real problem. We still have the bulk of the money allocated, right? Didn't we have, like, $60,000 that we allocated for the visitor center? You used most of it? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The board did set aside funds when we did decide at what point to finish repairing the visitor center. There are funds still available for that, so it's just a matter of us putting it out, getting a contractor to come in. When you're, really, it was waiting for the board to authorize us to make the expenditure, but really, what kind of, what kind of design are you looking for? Again, it goes back to that agreement that I was talking about. We want to set it up for transient voters or just put it back the way it was.
Originally, a year, a year and a half ago, two years ago, it was one bathroom, one, it was one throne and one sink. That's what you have, which wasn't a lot of capability. So, how do we give it more capability, even if it's on a day-to-day bid?
Was it?
I mean, two porta johns rented out on a longer term lease gives you more capability than you had when you had the.
So, what we would have with the original design with the shower and washer and dryer would be two toilets, is that correct? Do you remember?
It would be, yeah, there would be two, male and female.
Male and female, and then the washer dryer. Would the showers be in the restrooms?
Yes, it'd be male and female, yes.
Okay, all right.
There'd be one shower stall on each.
Yeah. Yeah?
Yes, thank you. John, all I really want to know is, when are we gonna move forward? You already have all the engineering drawings for multiple drainage and for the showers.
We do have a design set up based on, with the shower stalls, yes, washer dryer.
What I see going right now is the, every time we delay this moving forward, something else bad happens to it. Like, it didn't get done right, so now we have more mold. We have to go back and do the mold mitigation and make the repairs and make.
That's all finished.
The crack in the floor is gone?
No, no.
Well, what I'm being told is there's more mold in there.
We need to put the drywall and insulate about the last, about three feet off the floor.
And we've checked it for mold again?
Yes, well, the new HVA system is in and it's running, so the mold's been remediated.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then we, yeah, I know there's other things afoot with the doc and a grander plan, right? We've got the, we've got the equipment. We need to, in Joe's opinion, we need to install the equipment we have, quit dilly-dallying with this thing, and get the toilets open for the public. I don't care who's waiting to buy it, who wants to lease it, or what they want to do. The city, the people need the facilities down there to facilitate the fest and the activities that are going on down there. And that's the bottom line. That's what I'd like to hear, the plan to move forward. And I know you don't have it this minute, but that's something that we need, well, maybe you do. To, uh, just, let's just get it done. I'm tired of playing with it.
As soon as the board authorizes us to move ahead with that.
That's all you've been waiting for?
That's all of them.
John, I've got a question. When you say two bathrooms, is that two male, two female?
One male, one female bathroom.
We can only get two bathrooms in there?
Hmm, two.
If we add a shower?
I'm sorry.
So, if we didn't put the showers and washer and dryers in there, we would have more restroom? But the washer and dryer and the shower.
The washer and dryer in a common area, but the showers and bathrooms would be separate.
Okay.
I don't think that's.
Two, okay.
Two bathrooms, I mean, we spend all that money and just have two bathrooms?
Then I've only got one question. If you guys wanted to authorize this as a board, I'll support you in it, but I got one question. That's gonna be for, John, can we have, do we need to have an amendment to the budget to get this done?
We don't think so. We.
Uh, no?
Until we put it out to bid, we have the equipment, but we're gonna need to get a contract, a building contractor. Here's your design, we have the design, so we need to, it's been several years since we got a price. I'm sure that number's gone up a little bit. So, yeah, if, if the bids come in high, we will come back to you and say, this is where we're at. It's possible, yes.
But, but we've got, the major part with the air-conditioned HVAC system was the major cost, and that's out of the way, so that's.
HVAC is finished, new ventilation, vapor barriers.
So, now all we need is drywall, fix that crack in the floor, paint the outside, and put the facilities inside.
And the facilities, yes.
So, you just need clear direction from the board.
Yes.
On which way to go. So, does anybody have any direction as to what we want to give?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. The bathrooms, if I recall, are handicap accessible, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, I just wanted.
Okay, so you got directions?
I think we, we gotta take a vote on it.
Do we need to? We just need to give direction is all we really need to do, right? We don't, we need to take a vote.
Again, and it ties back to the, that'd be the second, it's another, it's, it's part of this conversation is that agreement with the future of Church Street docks, assuming by creating these facilities, we're good with amending our current lease the way it was to show the change in the ownership with Melissa Anderson and her plan to, what she's gonna do with the transient voter facilities in the future, for the next eight years, so that we can comply with the grant that we got about twelve years ago, which had a twenty-year, a twenty-year window.
Maybe you and Raz both, and Sonia both, but here's the question. For, we have control of that building right now. We is in town. I'm just, okay? Anything we do inside those four walls, what's the worst-case scenario you've got to paint for me? Like, if we go ahead and install some new equipment, new sinks, new toilets, if you want to put the shower stalls in, great. I don't see many people taking showers down there in the wintertime with boats and stuff. So, just let you know this right now. In the summertime, maybe with boats, okay? If we put some new, if we just hang some new equipment in there and restore the capability for daily use or whatever it is, you need to tell me how that's gonna impact the possible future of a lease or whatever, or change of ownership direction. How does that foul that up for us?
It doesn't. It makes it better.
There is, there's no reason that we shouldn't do something now to provide a service to the people that pay for that thing.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, do we need a motion on that or just?
Yes.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to move? And, and if we move forward, how do we want to design it, I would think? We don't need to worry about that right now?
The what?
Shouldn't we have a motion on the configuration of how we want to fix it, whether it's all restroom?
With the configuration that we had originally designed.
Yeah.
For the, with the shower stalls.
So, that's what your, that's what your motion is? Is for restrooms, male and female restrooms with showers and a washer and dryer?
Yes.
I just want to make sure it's all clear. Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on it.
I'm fine, yes.
Okay, so that's Jeff's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous, so we'll go ahead and give direction, I guess, to fix it with the washer and dryer, showers, and male and female restroom.
Thank you, first, thank you.
All righty, thank you, John. Okay, so items, we don't have items to commit. We consent, we've got public comment next. And Mary Pat, if you'd like to step to the microphone and your name and address, please. I can hear you, but I'm.
We can hear you.
Switch right on top.
Second?
Whoa.
Y'all hear me now, okay. Mary Pat Smith, 221 Nightheads Drive, Swansboro. Decided to come here to let you guys know something that is in the works. I, some of you have heard about this, but it's come to the attention of several of us that there are just certain things in town that are either cumbersome on the staff or challenging, that have encountered pitfalls, whether it's budget or staffing or calendar, et cetera. Some things that might be repeat, for instance, events like Veterans' Day or Memorial Day, things like that that are on the calendar, but they're not on the calendar. And then they kind of fall through the cracks. So, they don't necessarily fall in parks and rec or on the town, et cetera. So, that's kind of what propelled this discussion among several people, public and private, about putting together a committee, not under the town, but something along the lines of SADF. And what SADF was to Swansboro, which was the Swansboro Area Development Foundation. So, we are in the process of creating a nonprofit that will be here, if you will, a support arm, a booster club for Swansboro. If there's a need in the town, we will be able to help with provide resources, staffing, budget, et cetera. I have met with people from the town on the staff, Sonia and Elisa the other day. I met with Tina Stiegel, who spearheaded SADF many years ago. Have gotten a lot of great interaction or information from both of them as far as how to put this together to benefit the town, to take some of the pressure off of the staff when it comes to events and things like that, to go back to what SADF was and provided along the lines of, for instance, you know, the mayor's ball or buncow at Rotary Club or Derby Days. Things that will bring resources to the town, bring people to the town to then spend money with the downtown merchants, to bring people here to see Swansboro, to see Hammock's Beach, et cetera. So, my whole idea is to do it in a partnership, partnership with the town. Public, private partnerships happen all the time. We have about eighteen organizations within the town that are all on board with this idea. It sounds like there's gonna be a newly formed committee, which I think would be wonderful. Things like the Rotary, the Military Affairs Committee, which we are actually a nonprofit with the chamber, but we have separated from the chamber as far as legal designation. The Swansboro Baseball and Softball League, SBSL, there are all sorts of groups. The American Legion is here to partner with people, to help co-host events, things like that, to raise funds, to better the town of Swansboro, to drive people here, to re-engage the citizens perhaps, to engage the youth. I talked with Eric, for instance, Maticola S2S and Interact. I work with these kids all the time, and these volunteers are there wanting to participate, engage them in these different events. And something I brought up the other day with the town was provide volunteers. We have a lot of people here in this town who are retired, wanting to volunteer, wanting to participate. If you guys come down to Backpack Friends on Thursday, you'll find about seventy of them. Every Thursday, they say, hey, what can I do? How can I help the town? What can we participate in? So, this was just supposed to be a quick notification that this is kind of in the works and looking to do it in collaboration with all the different elements of this town in partnership. And so, you know, the way that I like to operate is all advice, input, ideas, welcome. And especially when we get to the point of having the organization established, then being able to say, okay, what is the greatest need? What is the biggest gap that we in partnership can fill in this town, and how do we do it? So, that's the nuts and bolts of it, just so you know what's in the works. And obviously, as we get a little closer, we'll have some more informational meetings and discussions and just kind of seeing how and where we go from there. Any questions?
Have you already formed the nonprofit?
Uh, it's.
Or are you in the process?
Yes, it'll be done this week. So, we're looking at a name, something along the lines of Swansboro Civic Alliance, things like that, something that is, you know.
I want to thank you for stepping up and trying to help the town, you know, in, with resources and.
Yeah.
Events and whatnot. I guess that's what I'm understanding you're saying, is you've got plenty of volunteers and helping just to market the town and, and would you be interested in small business or just more event-type things, do you think?
Oh, of course. I mean, anything that would, anyway, as I said, kind of a helping arm to Swansboro, whether it's the businesses, if there's an expo help out with the chamber, if it's this, you know, downtown merchants are having something, hey, we've got an army of people. They're here to help out. If the town has something, I mean, they have a hard time getting volunteers for mullet. So, here we have all these people that are already engaged, you know, whether it's the beautification committee, whatever it is, just sort of bring together people in a civic alliance, if you think about what those words mean, to better the town. And if we better the town and we make it, you know, more friendly, more beautiful, and people will want to come. Create economic opportunities. We've talked about Linda Thornley and I are sit on a couple of boards. We've talked about driving businesses here or conventions here, you know? Things like that create business opportunities and fundraising ability so that then we can have a new project. The last SADF helped out with the rec center and the dog park and various things like that. So, find a need that's outside of government, outside of what you guys are providing and working on, and raise the funds for it through fun events that will bring people here and do good with that money.
Anybody have any comments, questions? All right. There are.
Yeah, so I wasn't looking to bring anything more to you guys. It was more take stuff off of your plate, you know?
That's always a good thing. I'm sure the staff would appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, so she's the only one signed up for public comment in the second section. Anybody have anything they would like to add? Okay, so that includes that. We move on now to the managers' comments, John. Do you have anything? You, you. All right, um, board comments. So, I guess we'll start down at Pat, if you'd like to go ahead and start us out.
Well, as always, Steph, thank you, and the financials are always top shape, so thank you very much for that. Thanks for the people coming out. Congratulations on the beautification committee. I have high hopes for you guys. I really want to see some great things happening. Mary Pat, where are you? I don't know how she has enough time to do everything, but she's always there in the forefront. So, thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thanks again to the staff. I was pleased. I don't know if anybody has seen our new police car that's out there, black and white, marked. Somebody get pulled over? But, um, yeah, we should have, what, three more coming? Two. So, hopefully, the chief can get them out on the road and at least have a presence out there to maybe deter some of the speeders that are flying up and down twenty-four. Also, uh, John, I think it might be appropriate for us to get a hold of the Speeding Task Force and have them come out. They haven't been here in a while. Maybe if we could put them out there and pulling people over, might slow people down a little bit. Thanks for everybody for showing up. When you, you know, you make your comments and you plead your case, most of the time, good things happen. Sometimes, bad things happen, but at least you showed up and you gave your opinions, and that's how the process works. Thank you for coming.
Welcome aboard a new advisory committee, okay? That's the first thing out the door. John Barlow, I don't want to talk out of turn here, so I need your help, okay? Because I promised somebody in open meeting we would address this. Could we put out a, something for the public that explains the Integrated Emergency Operations Center Public Safety Facility? The concept of how this got started and what it's integrated into, and how the grants were granted that said, okay, we need an EOC in Swansboro, that was one purpose, but we also have a very deficient public safety building. And I apologize for that, and it's taken a long time. But is there something we could put out that way the folks know what's happening and why it occurred? Because I guess four years is a, causes like old man syndrome to hit or something like that, or people have senior moments and they don't recall all the minutes back for the past four years. I would think I'd find it very difficult to do that myself, matter of fact. But I want to know if you could address that in the room?
This is a story that starts back about 2019, after Hurricane Florence, when the town realized that that current facility was substandard. And you spent a considerable amount of time, and I can think of three different engineering firms the town employed to study that building, 2019, 2020, as far as what you can do with the existing building, what you might be able to do with a new, and they all kind of came to the same consensus that that building is basically not worth repairing, it's substandard, it's beyond its useful life. And that's where we're at, five years later. We're still, we fortunately got, we got funding early to build the facility for an EOC, which then we were able to develop into a new fire station, new police station along with that. So that's what we are currently still looking for, land acquisition. I think everyone knows that story, how hard you all have been actively seeking land, but it's not as easily, easy as it seems to find a location that, you know, we might find the land, but the location is very important when you want to consider where you're going to put your police and fire service. EOC is different. You might be able to put that somewhere standalone, but when you start considering where you're going to put your emergency responders, that brings it into a different level. But yes, I would be glad to put the story together, why we're doing that, where we're at. A lot, you know, most of what we've done now is definitely public knowledge. I know we discussed a lot about it in closed session, but a lot of that is public knowledge. So I'd be more than willing to draft it, I guess, into one document. We can make it available for public.
All right, appreciate that. So any other questions for the board on that? For me, and basically, it's a reminder of how this all started in the first place. And with that, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up here tonight, okay? And that you're interested in making Swansboro what it can be. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, staff. Everybody showed up tonight. A smaller crowd than what we're used to, but that's a good thing, I guess. Mary Pat, great idea. I hope to see you get that active ZEM status. I'd also like to, I said, made some notes up here. The multiple organizations are already in town that could be available to make your life easier on that. And just the Rotary, the Masonic Temple, the Legion, DFW, they're just full of the type of people you described. They're retirees that, I ain't going to say they ain't got nothing else to do, because since I retired, I don't know how I had time to work, you know? There's a lot of stuff going on. But again, thank you for picking up that and moving forward with it like you usually do. Committee, beautification committee, everything's good? All right. Jimmy, I think you would benefit from that article that Doug wants to have John put together. And that's all I got.
I'm going to say thank you for the staff. Sonya, thank you for that financial report and keeping your book straight. The parent committee, congratulations. Look forward to working with you. Thank you for everyone else for coming out. Mary Pat, I'm glad you found a solution, all that time and effort, working with you.
Okay, first, I want to say thank you to the first responders, because this is First Responders Day. So thank you for that. And you know how I found that out? Mary Pat's Facebook page. So if you want to know anything like that, go to Mary Pat's Facebook page, and that's your source of information for things. But thank you so much for that. Congratulations to the new committee. And thank you again, Mary Pat, for stepping up and trying to help alleviate some of the burden or work that our town staff experiences. And we can work really good together, I think, to make everybody carry a lighter load, I would guess to say. I do want to say that during the candidate's forums, there were some questions asked about roads and money. And so in that thought process, I usually keep in touch with Representative Gable, and I haven't heard from him in about a month or so, so I reached out to him last night, night before, night before last. And there, as I stated earlier in some meetings, that the money's very tight right now for any additional funding that we could get for our roads down here. So I do want everybody to know that we are on top of that. It's not something that's neglected. I talked with Senator Lozaro some, he's the head of the Transportation Committee on the Senate. So it's not that we're ignoring it. We do have, for what it's worth, two crosswalks that are in the process of being done at Phillips-Soup Road, right there by McDonald's, and Norris Road, right there by Walmart. So we're trying to see if we can get an additional one, because I think, John, you were notified there might be some additional fund leftover out there. Yeah. Yeah, and that's what Jumper was saying, there was, might be a little bit of leftover money from other projects that was left over. Also, with the mullet festival, thank you to everybody involved with that. I think you did a great job moving that at the spur of the moment and putting it where it was. I know there was a little bit of pushback from some merchants, so I reached out and had a lot of conversations and several meetings with some of the merchants to try to facilitate cooperation. I offered to meet with them once a quarter, not as a town meeting, but just as me being part of the town government, just to see what their needs and concerns are. And right now, my feedback is that they think they can form that themselves and have their own coalition down there, which is great. And that would be, that would be the best thing. I mean, I don't need to be involved in it, but I'm willing to help. Parks and Recs always needs volunteers, so if you do have some volunteer time, they can certainly use it. And of course, Sam Blan nominees, or we need some nominees, some more nominees, so we can close that out and get that voted. So with that being said, unless anybody else has comments, that's all, I think I said enough. So now we'll probably move into a closed session, and I'll need a motion to enter a closed session pursuant. Yep, okay. Okay, and this is to talk between a privilege, attorney-client privilege and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and to establish and instruct the public body's staff to negotiating agents concerned position to be taken on behalf of the public body. So we've got a motion and a second, so we'll take a vote. Okay, so we're going into closed session. I don't know that there's anything to report when we come out. There might be, I'm not sure, so you're welcome to stay around if you'd like, but we will go into closed session. All right, so we're out of closed session, and we have nothing to report at this time. So do I have a motion to close?
To move?
Second?
Second.
All right. Meeting closed.